Good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM on September 7th, 2022. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the James City County Planning Commission. Mr. Holt, will you call to roll, please?
Mr. Rogers.
You're here.
Mr. Rogers represents the Berkeley District. Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Rose represents the Roberts District. Mr. Pollster.
Here.
Mr. Pollster represents the Jamestown District and is vice chair to the commission. Mr. Alderman.
Here.
Mr. Alderman is an at-large member. Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member and is chair of the Planning Commission. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county. It's my pleasure to be secretary to the Planning Commission. Sitting to my left is Ms. Liz Parman, our deputy county attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. A couple of quick housekeeping items. Tonight, we have an SUP on the agenda for the Richmond Road Pivot Energy Solar Project. The applicant has asked for a deferral, so if anybody's here to speak on that matter tonight, we will open the public hearing, and you are welcome to make your comments. Otherwise, please know that the public hearing will be continued until October's meeting, and we won't be having any discussion on that this evening. So, and then for my colleagues, just as a matter of procedure, when we get to item number four, which is the battery storage facility, we'll have two votes tonight. One is for the SUP and the other is for comp plan consistency. So, just a reminder that we'll have that as we go. So, at this point, I will open the floor for public comment. Public comment portion is reserved for any comments to be addressed to the Planning Commission that are not germane to a public hearing that we will have this evening. So, if you're here to speak on any of the public, any of the items on the agenda when we have the public hearing, you'll have the opportunity to speak then. So, is there anybody that wishes to make a comment this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to reports of the commission. First, first report we have is Policy Committee. Mr. Alderman.
Thank you. The Policy Committee met twice since the last Planning Commission meeting. The first meeting was on August 11th. The meeting came to order at 4:00 PM with a quorum present. Also present were Andrea Case, Paxton Condon, Ellen Cook, Vlad Gavrilievich, Josh Crump, Liz Parman remotely, John Riesinger, and Thomas Weisong. The committee met to continue its role in the Planning Division work program for the remainder of fiscal 2022 and to begin the process of aligning the zoning ordinance with the revised 2045 Comprehensive Plan's goals, strategies, and actions per directives from the Board of Supervisors. Staff began by addressing three of the five Board of Supervisors initiating resolutions, one of which was to complete a draft ordinance revision that set residential lot sizes consistent with the rural lands designation description and development standards contained in the comprehensive plan. The draft also includes language that grandfathers all parcels in existence as of January 1st, 2022, that are 25 or fewer acres in size, and also eliminates the central well requirement for subsidies that are consistent with the stated rural lands designation description and development standards. Mr. Weisong led a discussion on the draft revision of zoning ordinance section 24-214 and 24-350, which covered the revised lot sizes and grandfathering, and he recommended that the Policy Committee recommend approval of them to the full Planning Commission. Mr. Weisong also recommended such approval for the draft revisions to sections 19-59 through 19-62 in the subdivision ordinance, which cover water and sewer connection requirements for subdivisions. The committee tabled the recommendation pending clarification of the effect the revisions may have on the natural and cultural asset plan mapping, wildlife corridors, how new clustering standards would affect the revision, and whether to use setbacks or buffers for protection on scenic roads. Staff will schedule another Policy Committee meeting during the week of August 26th, 22nd to determine next steps. The committee then discussed Board's second directive to consider amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances to provide additional requirements to protect and preserve scenic roadways consistent with strategy LU 6.3 of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan. The staff had no proposed draft revisions but asked the committee for feedback on what constitutes a scenic roadway and which tools would best meet the directive. Staff recommended that the Policy Committee define scenic roadways as portions of community character corridors located outside of the primary service area. The committee agreed but also added Croker Road from I-64 to Sycamore Landing Road to the segments of the following CCCs outside the PSA, which will be considered for additional regulations as part of this ordinance amendment process. Forge Road, Old Stage Road, Richmond Road, Monticello Avenue, John Tyler Memorial Highway, Riverview Road, Centerville Road, Colonial Parkway, and Croker Road from I-64 to Sycamore Landing Road. A study of a visual analysis of view sheds from Forge Road showed few structures within the distances under consideration. The committee decided that using setbacks would provide better protection than buffers for these roads because buffering would obscure the view shed. Also setbacks should be applied to specific roads rather than to zoning districts because applying setbacks to entire districts might impact narrow parcels and would require too much grandfathering to be practical. Implementing an overlay district was also thought to be impractical. The Policy Committee therefore directed staff to further evaluate setbacks for scenic road protection and to draft amendment amended ordinances. Relating further to the initiating resolution regarding the R8 and A1 districts, the committee considered the 11 A1 cluster configuration subdivision standards, other than density discussed earlier, for its own focused review. The consultant stated that clustering can produce some benefits but that they rarely provide protection for rural character. The committee wanted some assurance that clustering clustered housing would not get too close to scenic roadways. Staff also prepared a summary of the existing standards for the A1 cluster configuration as well as potential considerations for revisions and improvements. The standards for road frontage access buffer screening and setbacks from roadways were discussed in context with scenic roadways, using setbacks to provide better protection than buffers which obscure the view shed. The open space conserved area percentage and open space conserved area values configuration and ownership issues were discussed in the context of the earlier discussion on the A1/R8 lot size and the natural and cultural asset plan mapping and how new clustering standards would affect that revision. The meeting adjourned at 5:38 PM. The second meeting of the Policy Committee was held on August 22nd. The meeting came to order at 10:00 AM with a quorum present. Also present were Andrea Case, Paxton Condon, Ellen Cook, Josh Crump, Liz Parman, John Riesinger, and Thomas Weisong. The committee met to continue its discussion of the Board of Supervisors initiating resolution pertaining to A1/R8 and subdivision ordinances. The committee members had clarified the effects of the revisions might have on the natural cultural asset plan mapping and wildlife corridors, how new clustering standards would affect the revision, and whether to use setbacks or buffers for protection on scenic roads. There was also a better understanding of how these ordinances would apply to A1 and R8 districts inside the PSA. There was also a discussion about the effects the revisions may have on the supply of affordable housing in the county. Committee then unanimously voted to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the ordinance revisions as written in items 3, 4, and 5 of the reading material to the Board of Supervisors. The committee then recommended, excuse me, the committee then requested of staff that they model three properties to learn how scenic road setbacks and the new 1 to 20 density designation description will affect them and whether new ordinances will help protect wildlife corridors. The meeting adjourned at 10:42 AM. That's it for me. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Development Review Committee. Ms. Knoll.
Okay, the Development Review Committee met at 4:00 PM on August 24th, 2022 to consider SP-22-0005 Colonial Veterinary Clinic Parking Expansion. Present were myself, Mr. Frank Pollster, Mr. Rob Rose, and Mr. Stephen Rogers, Mr. Josh Crump, Principal Planner, Mr. Jose Ribiero, Senior Landscape Planner, and Ms. Katie Pelletier, Community Development Assistant. The matter came before the DRC for a determination of master plan consistency. Mr. Ryan Stevenson of AES Engineering, on behalf of the applicant, has submitted a site plan for the development of a parking lot, pedestrian accommodation, and vehicular entrance to be connected to an existing veterinary clinic located at 3280 Ironbound Road. According to the applicant, the additional 15 parking spaces would allow for additional staff parking. The proposed parking would be located on a parcel which is subject to an adopted master plan and recorded proffers. On February 12th, 2008, the Board of Supervisors approved AZ-0005-2007 to rezone the property located at 112 Ingram from R8 Rural Residential to B1 General Business to allow for the construction of a two-story office building, attached garage, and three parking spaces. Proffer number one requires that the property shall be put to one or more of the following possible uses: business, governmental, contractors, and professional offices and accessory uses thereto as defined in the James City County zoning ordinance. All other, all other are was otherwise permissible uses shall be prohibited. The property shall be developed generally in accordance with the plan. Such minor changes as the Development Review Committee determines does not change the basic concept or character of the development. Staff determined that the current proposal does, does change the basic concept and character of the development from the approved master plan. Staff recommended that the DRC find this proposal not consistent with the adopted master plan and recommend, recommend a denial to the Planning Commission and that the applicant pursue a master plan slash proffer amendment through the legislative application process. Mr. Rogers asked for a better understanding of how the committee would determine master plan consistency. Mr. Ribiero stated that it was the committee's discretion after reviewing the matter. Staff and committee discussed the proposal layout, proposed layout of the parcels, the terms of the proffer, and the difference between the original plan, which was in keeping with the community character for five forks, and the proposed parking lot. Mr. Ribiero noted that the building in the original plan had architectural details that enhanced the character of the area as opposed to a parking lot. Mr. Rogers inquired about the recommendation that the applicant pursue a different procedure. Mr. Ribiero stated that he recommends that the applicant pursue a master plan and proffer amendment to remove the building from the master plan and amend proffers to be consistent with the master plan. Staff noted that it required more than just submitting a site plan. Staff further noticed that since the property is bound by a master plan and proffer, staff is bound to adhere to it. Mr. Pollster inquired if the commission finds the proposed parking to be consistent, will the applicant, will the applicant be required to follow through on the landscaping as submitted? Mr. Ribiero stated he would review the landscaping plan to ensure that it meets ordinance requirements and is consistent with the proffer for enhanced landscaping. Mr. Rogers inquired if there was a downside of potentially finding the proposal to be consistent with the master plan rather than having the applicant go through the legislative process. Discussion revolved around costs involved and the potential for setting precedents. Mr. Ribiero recommended that if the committee finds this consistent, then the applicant will need to remove internal property lines. Mr. Ribiero noted that if those property lines are removed, then the parking lot could, could be considered accessory. The committee and staff discussed the requirements of the primary principles for five forks. The committee noted that the proposed parking would be in the rear of the business. The committee reviewed the existing features of the property and the other businesses, and the other business, and noted that the property would be well screened. The committee noted that the proposal does stay within the spirit of the guidelines. The committee further noted that this is a stable business and that the owner would be committed to ensuring the aesthetics of the area. The committee found that the proposal does fit the character of the area. Mr. Pollster made up a notion that the proposal be found generally consistent with the master plan for the property with conditions that submitted drawings without the building become the master plan for the property and that the proposal undergo landscape review for adherence to landscape ordinance and the proffers for enhanced land, enhanced landscaping. The committee recommended that the staff work with the applicant regarding extinguishing internal property lines. On a roll call vote, the committee voted to recommend that the Planning Commission find the proposal consistent with the master plan. The vote was three, four, and one against.
Ms. Knoll, any questions? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. This is usually reserved for non-controversial items, of which we have two items tonight. One is minutes of the August 3rd, 2022 regular meeting, and the second item is what Ms. Knoll just shared notes about, which is Site Plan-22-0005 Colonial Veterinary Clinic Parking Expansion. I know there was a lot of traffic back and forth. Anybody want to remove one or both items from the consent agenda? Mr. Croft?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove the Colonial Veterinary Clinic from the consent agenda and discuss that further. There still are some questions in my mind on that one.
Okay, fair enough. Anybody opposed to that? So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2022 regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Rivera, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, I'll get, turn it over to you.
I think Ms. Ms. Knoll provided a good summary of the project, and just to make sure that we are all looking at the same property. But again, we received, staff received a site plan application for a development of a parking lot area. The site plan, actually, three parcels are subject to, that's to the site plan application. One is the, the parcel where the clinic is currently is, and then you see that squarish parcel in the middle, and then the parcel that, the triangle one, pie-shaped property. So, the location of the parking area is to be in that pie-shaped parcel. And then in the middle, you will have a sidewalk that will be connecting the park, the proposed parking lot to the existing clinic. So, those are the, the dynamics, if you will, of the application. It just so happens that the, the property at 112 Ingram Road, the pie-shaped one, has a, has been rezoned in 2007 from R8 to B1, and it has proffers, and it has also an adopted master plan. And the master plan for that property showed a 1,400 square, square feet building, two story, garage, and, and space, and five park, five parking spaces. That's what a master plan was approved for. And there was also a proffer, and specifically a proffer number one, that talks about being consistent, that development to be consistent, generally consistent with what, with the, what was reviewed and approved during the rezoning application. So, that's a summary of where we are.
Any questions?
Mr. Rivera, do you have a graphic of the master plan that was approved for the veteran, the veterinary clinic, so that we can maybe compare it to the three parcels that we see right now?
So, we don't, so, the parcel for the clinic and the, the middle parcel, they're actually both subject to a rezoning as well, but they do not have any proffers or master plans.
So, just so I understand, currently, the parcel on the far left, as you're looking at the screen, is the existing veterinary clinic?
Uh, this, exactly. The existing veterinary clinic is located in the corner of Ironbound Road in Ingram Road. It's in the corner.
Okay.
And then you have that wooded parcel in the middle.
Okay.
And then you have the, the pie shape. They're all under the same ownership. They're all zone B1, general business, and they're all have shared the same comprehensive plan designation, which makes use.
And the pie-shaped parcel, there is a, a master plan for that that shows, you said, I think, a 14-foot tall building?
It's a 1,400 square feet.
1,400 square.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think.
Two stories.
Two story, yes, sir.
Okay.
I think we have the next available exhibit. Let me try. There you go. And if you can rotate that, please?
To go to the view in the menu above, File, Edit, View, and under View, Rotate.
I won't philosophize, I just wanted clarification, and I, I have some thoughts, but we'll come back on, on those.
Do you have a sense of the footprint of the building, garage, and parking lot from the original master plan versus the proposed? Not the same, basically different?
Uh, I'm gonna use my best, best judgment here. I think as far as adding impervious surface, they're probably the same equivalent.
I think if you take a look at the proposed master plan, you won't see the BMP at the top left. It's all done, and the footprint is actually less, with less impervious surface.
With?
The new proposed one. You get better landscaping around the entire place, which was never really there. And, and the landscaping is not only on this triangle, but it goes to the adjacent parcel all the way through, so that the sidewalk and the buffering and setback for that actually improves what's there now.
Mr. Rivera, would we anticipate if that center parcel was developed, that it would come back for another master plan consistency? Or if it, there's nothing on the adopted master plan, then they would have to submit again?
Are you referring to that, that middle parcel?
Yeah, the center parcel.
Yes, sir. I did research, and I, I, I know the, the rezoning cases, but again, there was really very few information about them, other than they were rezoned, but there was not really a master plan per se.
That scenario, the site plan would be re, repeatedly, it would not come back.
Mr. Rivera, however, if you take the last recommendation that the DRC made, which was to remove the parcel lines on that, making it an accessory apartment, then the whole thing would be together. Is that correct? It'll be one property?
Uh, that is correct. The way that the proffers read is, it says that property shall be put to one or more of the following possible uses: business, governmental, contractors, and professional offices and accessory uses thereto as defined in the James City County zoning ordinance. So, the importance of the boundary line extinguishment is because currently, even though a parking lot is a permissible use in B1, but it's, the proffer requires that the, you know, either a primary use or a sec, or accessory use, and a parking lot wouldn't be an accessory use to, the way it is, the way currently, currently is shown is just a parking lot, so the parking lot wouldn't be an accessory to anything. But once you, you, you do the boundary line extinguishment, then we can say that the proposed parking area is an accessory use to the existing vet clinic.
So, although those original limits of that, those SUP conditions or, or the proffers would not match up any longer to a property line, when you extinguish the property line, it does not then automatically extend those proffers and other legislative conditions to the rest of it. That would still stay over that triangle piece. So, again, should that, you know, again, while the setbacks are being eliminated, it helps create an accessory use, it helps create some of the consistency issues, but should something come in in the future in that centerpiece, it would be reviewed administratively. Should anything come in in the future on that triangle piece, it would come back to the DRC.
My, my concern, this is one of those situations where what the applicant's proposing to Mr. Pollster's comments is probably better as far as landscaping and layout, but if you look at the master plans that are currently approved and in place, you know, that triangle parcel, that master plan calls for a 1,400 square foot building, and now the applicant is saying a 15-space parking lot or a parking lot. And, and to me, that's a significant deviation from the master plan, and then the middle parcel currently doesn't have any, any master plan issues, but the applicant's proposing putting a part, a sidewalk through there to access the main clinic. And I guess my, my concern is not so much the quality of the request by the applicant, but whether the number of changes are so significant that they cumulatively, cumulatively deviate from the master plans that were previously approved, and that's, that's my concern in that regard. And that's why I asked, one of the reasons I asked to have a further discussion on this.
Other questions for Mr. Rivera? Thank you. Any other discussion, comments?
I, I had the same concerns. This is a perfectly comfortable, I'm perfectly comfortable with this new plan as a use. I've driven down Ingram Road. This will not offend the five forks principles, doesn't affect community character at all. And it, to the extent it would help a local growing business, that's what we all want. But there's no question that this is not consistent with, in my mind, that this is not consistent with the master plan, and so Ms. Knoll mentioned in her report the, the issue of precedence and that sort of thing, and does this take us down a, to use a cliche, slippery slope? So, that's what I was wrestling with. I'm glad Mr. Croft pulled this for further discussion.
Just for a clarification on this, I think, for me, what I struggled with was when you looked at the approved proffer, which was in 2008 by the board, four years after the five forks, and in fact, the five forks principle references the veterinary clinic as the architectural style. But, but anyhow, in 2008, when this thing was approved, the, the proffer one for the conceptual plan says the property shall be developed generally in accordance with the plan, with such minor changes as the DRC committee determines, does not change the basic concept or character of the development. So, what does that generally, and what does that mean? That, to me, becomes a question that I, I struggled with. So, there was no doubt about that the development itself is consistent with the principles laid out in the five forks piece across the board. And in fact, what they're planning to do really reinforces what that community look is going to be. So, so what you really come down to is kind of looking at this thing within context. And as I understand it, the original vet thing, it was actually 96 to 85, and actually predated the five forks, and it was stated in there. Number two was that the current owner, who has the veterinary clinic, when he started out in his career, actually started out with his practice and now has bought that. And so, it's not like this gentleman isn't invested in the community. So, it, when it came down to it for me, is, was the removal of the two-story building and the garage a better fit, and was that generally in accordance with what the guy wants to do with the property? Now, the sticky wicket to the whole piece is that there was the property line pieces involved in that, as well as the landscaping. And, and so, you know, that needs to be cleaned up in order for that to go forward, and that was a recommendation that the DRC made to you, as well as the landscaping review. Now, as to whether or not we're making a precedent, I mean, we take these things one at a time, and we judge them on the merits of what's being presented to us. And so, as Jack has said, you know, we try to encourage business, we try to increase the development, the guy's got a track record of being in there, and what's more, what he probably wants to do with that middle section at some point is expand his business into a doggy daycare, as well as a grooming piece associated with his business. And so... And so allowing this parking lot, which moves the staff out of those areas into this, providing the correct landscaping and conforming with the Five Forks is a plus, as you brought up. So you're really down to the point, is this generally consistent with the plan? And that's a judgment call that we make all the time on the DRC. And I think that's why the vote came out at three to one, as it is.
One of my concerns, just my final comment, is I've seen cases in the past where the assumption is, oh yeah, this person's a well-known member of the community, or they've been here for X number of years, and we think they're gonna develop this responsibly. And it turns out that circumstances change, they sell a parcel, they, a new developer comes in, and all of a sudden, what was a good faith effort has been changed, and that's my concern, and I still feel that, I'm not saying that this proposal is not a good proposal, I think it is, but I, in my opinion, it deviates from the approved master plan to the point where it really should have a master plan amendment, but that's just where I'm coming from on that.
I've got something on that as well, and it basically tracks with Mr. Croft down there. When you talk about like the character of Five Forks, which is actually my district, and I'm up there a lot, I don't know that to say parking lots, even if there's trees around them, enhance the character of Five Forks. As I understood the proffer, it was gonna be, unless I read it incorrectly, but sort of an architecturally appealing building. I thought that there was something in the text about this, a structure that would bring a professional office and/or government contractors, but something that would have a use that I also think should be encouraged at Five Forks, meaning a variety of different businesses and places for people to work. So since we have a process to change the master plan, I at least did not see why those avenues, that legislative amendment process shouldn't be utilized, I guess, to look at it. To me, I don't know how, just with your eyes, a two-story attractive building, assuming it's attractive with three parking spaces, is consistent with the idea of a flat 15-space parking lot? I just don't see them as consistent.
I guess I appreciate that comment, but I kind of see it the opposite way, in that the comparison to me between a building and a parking lot, I guess, let me take a step back. I think we discussed this idea of the legislative process in developing a new master plan, which would likely be approved, the parking lot would likely be approved, and in that scenario, we've forced the owner to go, take more time and more money to go through this process to get to the same point, and that point, to me, is development of this property, and development, whether it's a building or a parking lot, seems pretty close to me, and that's why I found the idea of, that it was consistent with the master plan.
It's basically what we came to, the conclusion, why do it all over again?
Appreciate that. So I think I would, I would sort of chime in on the same. Had it been just a parking lot with the addition of a building, then we might be talking about a master plan consistency, because it's ultimately a change in use, but because we're going from a building to a parking lot, and it's, in my mind, supplemental to the vet clinic, you know, I think I could find that it was consistent. Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve consistence, generally consistent to the master plan, with the two, you know, two provisos in there that we look at, the develop, the owner look at extinguishing the property line issue, and that the staff review the landscaping plan for that. The property lining?
Yes, we're gonna require that anyway administratively, in order to meet that accessory definition, but, so it'll get done either way.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion with the two caveats, and given that we don't all seem to be in agreement, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Holt to do a roll call for that, if you would.
That'll just help me keep it, keep track of it for the minutes, is all. Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
And Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
That was supposed to be the non-controversial stuff, so.
Easy.
Tonight, our first public hearing is zoning dash 22 dash 0001 and SUP dash 22 dash 0012, 5700 Williamsburg Landing rezoning and SUP amendment. Mr. Weisong, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the commission. Mr. Paul Gerhart of Kaufman &amp; Canoles has applied on behalf of Williamsburg Landing Incorporated to rezone approximately 2.65 acres from the R8 Rural Residential District to the R5 Multifamily Residential District, and to amend the existing special use permit for the existing Williamsburg Landing Continuing Care Retirement Community to include the existing parking lot and gated access as part of this development. This property is zoned R8 Rural Residential, and is located within the primary service area, and this portion of the property is designated airport within the adopted comprehensive plan. The subject acreage has been previously approved by the board and developed as a gated entrance and surface parking lot, both of which are accessory to the existing Williamsburg Landing development. No dwelling units or improvements are proposed as part of this rezoning application and special use permit amendment, and if approved, this application would establish zoning consistency within the parcel and have one special use permit governing the entire area. Staff has included SUP conditions, one of which would restrict any future redevelopment of this parcel to only be for those uses that are accessory to the existing Continuing Care Retirement Community. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning and SUP amendment subject to the proposed conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant team is here with us tonight as well. Thank you.
Mr. Weisong, any questions? Mr. Haldeman?
Not a question, but I'd just like to make it clear, I'm a resident of the Landing, and I'm quite convinced that that does not constitute a conflict of interest, and so I plan on participating in this discussion and eventually voting on it.
Any other questions for Mr. Weisong? Thank you, Mr. Weisong. This time, we will open the public hearing, and I do have one speaker card, which is Mr. Zhang. You're welcome to make comments, if you like.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Benny Zhang, I'm an associate attorney with the Williamsburg firm of Kaufman &amp; Canoles. I'm pleased to be here on behalf of our client today. I just wanted to introduce our team. We have Mr. Greg Sohr, who is the CEO, Mr. Michael Williams, who's the COO, Mr. Tom Tango of Gerson's Tango, and I'm joined with my senior colleague, Mr. Paul Gerhart, who submitted the application. Just wanted to make a quick comment, we appreciate staff, Mr. Holt, Mr. Weisong, for working with us on this application. We had a good collaborative effort on this initiative, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have. Thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Zhang.
So I don't have any other speaking cards. Anybody else wish to speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over for discussion. Right, so that's the last item on our agenda this evening, so we'll get to that a little bit later. So, thanks. Any comments, conversations, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Z dash 22 dash 0001 and SUP dash 22 dash 0012, 5700 Williamsburg Landing.
Mr. Haldeman? Mr. Holt, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, SUP dash 22 dash 0013, 3252 North Riverside Drive, Contractors Office and Warehouse. Ms. Costello, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Mr. Lloyd Stevens of Stevens Remodeling has applied for a special use permit to allow for the operation of a contractors office and warehouse on a 13.69 acre parcel located at 3252 North Riverside Drive, zoned A1 General Agricultural. A contractors office and storage is a specially permitted use in A1 zoning districts. Currently, Mr. Stevens operates his business from 7845 Richmond Road. According to the applicant, the commercial operation includes five full-time employees, as well as himself and his wife. One employee will come to the property once a week, and all other employees work directly at the job sites. Customers typically do not come to the property, however, four to five customers per year may come to the office. Most deliveries are to the various job sites. On average, there would be one delivery to the property a month, and one delivery a month from the property to a job site. All equipment will be stored in the warehouse, and all vehicles associated with the business are taken home by employees. The comprehensive plan designates this property, as well as all of the surrounding parcels, as rural lands. Recommended primary uses include agricultural and forestal activities. However, appropriately scaled and located directly, direct agricultural/forestal support uses, home-based occupations, or certain uses which require very low intensity settings relative to the site in which it will be located, may be considered on the basis of a case-by-case review, provided such uses are compatible with the natural and rural character of the area. The proposed SUP conditions were designed to address and enhance compatibility with the natural and rural character of the area, and to minimize impacts to adjacent properties by limiting the area where this activity can occur on the property, limiting storage of equipment and machinery to indoor storage only, limiting the days and times for deliveries, and providing vegetative buffered areas and landscaped areas to visually screen storage or parking areas from adjacent properties. Staff finds that the proposal is compatible with surrounding zoning and development, and consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the attached conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions the commission has, and the applicant is also available. Thank you.
Ms. Costello, any questions for staff?
Just one. Given that it's an SUP, and as we all know, it runs with the land in perpetuity, you know, are we, my concern is that this might become a different use in the future, and since we have seen over the past few years, a lot of the different sort of contractors that are out there to have been working to clean up the lots, if you will, because they had stockpiles of trees and debris and mulch and those types of things, you know, one, I asked Ms. Costello to investigate whether or not it would be reasonable to amend the conditions to add no stockpiling of materials, soils, those types of things, so, one, can we do that, and two, is the applicant agreeable to doing that?
I did speak with the applicant, and he was agreeable. We did draft a condition, I can read it to you tonight. No outdoor storage of materials, including soil stockpiles, defined by Section 24 dash 46 of the zoning ordinance, shall be permitted on the property.
Did I also recall that there's a condition in there where there's no outdoor parking, everything has to be inside of the building, and all?
All equipment and materials will be in the building, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Costello?
Ms. Costello, did you have one for a dumpster as well?
Oh, yes. In our conversations today, the applicant also mentioned that he would like a dumpster, so we're going to, we amended Condition 4, and added that the dumpster will be screened by fencing or landscaping, and we'll also have times that it'll be between eight and five, that it can be picked up.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will open the public hearing, and we'll open it up for comments. I don't have any speaker cards. Mr. Stevens, did you wanna say anything, or? Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stevens? Put him on the spot. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of SUP 22 dash 0013, 252 North Riverside Drive.
With the amended?
With the conditions, and as they were amended this evening.
Okay, great. So we have a motion to approve. Mr. Holt?
Mr. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Great, thank you very much. Our third public hearing this evening, SUP dash 22 dash 0015, 7294 and 7296 Richmond Road Pivot Energy Solar Project. So are we gonna have any presentation?
No staff presentation this afternoon. Mr. Chairman, again, the applicant, you have a notice and a letter of request sitting at your desk. The applicant has requested a one-month continuance of this until your October meeting, and this will really give them just a little bit of extra time to go through all of the proposed SUP conditions, and some other modifications that they may need when they get to a later site plan design stage for certain erosion and stormwater control measures. So given that things may potentially change over the next 30 days, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to recommend we bring the staff report back to you at this time. This is an advertised case, we do have to, as you mentioned earlier, we do have to open the public hearing, but then instead of closing it, we would keep that open until the next month's meeting.
At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we understand that there's a deferral, so I would need a voice vote to go ahead and defer this to October meeting.
Aye.
I guess, I'm sorry, so all in favor?
Aye.
So any opposed? So, thank you very much. So we will continue this to our regular October meeting. Our fourth public hearing this evening, SUP dash 22 dash 0016, 141 Blow Flats Road, Battery Storage Facility. Ms. Condon, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Mr. Brian Quinlan has applied on behalf of Calvert Energy for a special use permit to construct an electrical generation facility at 141 Blow Flats Road. The 6.87 acre parcel is zoned M2 General Industrial, and is designated General Industry by the 2045 comprehensive plan. The property is inside of the primary service area, and is currently undeveloped, and located next to an existing switchgear station at 147 Blow Flats Road. The proposed facility will consist of 15 battery storage containers to be set 100 feet back from the property lines. The facility would allow for any surplus of power from the grid to be stored, and then used later during times of higher demand or shortages. According to Virginia Code, Section 15.22232, unless a utility facility is shown on the adopted comprehensive plan or other master plans for the county, the local Planning Commission and a governing body shall review to determine whether the location, character, and extent of the project is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development, and consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission find this application consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan, and recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed conditions. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Condon? Haldeman?
I have one, just to repeat the email exchange. We had the, the master plan shows the pad, the concrete pad upon which these batteries units sit, covers part of wetlands, and I know you responded to me, but could you share how that's going to be handled, please?
Absolutely. The applicant would be required to get an ACOE permit for any impacts to the wetlands before stormwater would be able to sign off on any approvals. The Stormwater Division will also review this during the site plan phase following the SUP. And- the S U P, and no approvals would be required from the Wetlands Board either.
What's an A C O E?
It's an Army Corps of Engineers permit.
Any other questions? Dr. Rose?
Why does it not need approval from the Wetlands Board?
Because it's a non-title wetlands.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Condon. Appreciate it. This time, we will open the public hearing, and I have a speaker card for Mr. Michael Pelfrey.
My name is Michael Pelfrey. I own the property at one, on Blow Flats Road, and I just wanted to go on record as endorsing this. I fully support this and Brian Quinlan in developing this piece of property for this project.
Questions for Mr. Pelfrey? So, thank you very much. And the applicant's here as well tonight. Did anybody have questions for the applicant, or did you all have a presentation that you wanted to share? So, any questions?
Mr. O'Connor, you were concerned about gases, you know, coming out of the project, right? Did that get straightened out, or no?
Yeah, I was going to cover that in the discussion part, so.
Okay, fine. I don't have any questions, Sam.
At this point, I will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Just to answer Ms. Knoll's question, I did have a question for staff in the Fire Department, and the applicant opined as well. So, just a question regarding fires, is there aren't any currently, any, that I could find any adopted NFPA standards. But in talking to our emergency service folks and just from the response that was shared with you all from the applicant, you know, there won't be a certificate of occupancy or site plan approval, I guess, until, until any issues regarding fire safety and life safety are resolved. So, so that's just part of the normal process, so I'm happy to let it go with that. Any other comments, questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Do you want the motion in the order of approval and then consistency?
So, yeah, first piece would be approval, and then the second piece would be consistency with the master plan.
Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve S U P-22-0016. Mr. Holt, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Pollster?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And I need a motion to, we have two resolutions in there. One is, there's a resolution for consistency with the comp plan per Section 15.2-2232, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the resolution that states that 141 Blow Flats Road Battery Storage Facility is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, as stated in Virginia Code, Section 15 dash, I'm sorry, 15.2-2232.
Thank you, Mr. Haldeman. Mr. Holt, the roll?
Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Pollster?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Aye.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Aye.
And Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Our last public hearing this evening is Ordinance-22-0002, Amendments for R8 Rural Residential and A1 General Agricultural Lot Sizes and Related Requirements. Mr. Wyson, welcome back.
Good evening, once again. In the fall of 2021, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved the James City County 2045 Comprehensive Plan, Our County, Our Shared Future. This long-term vision for the county includes preserving the county's rural character as a priority, which was an important concern shared by the citizens of the county during the plan update process. In the spring of this year, the Board of Supervisors adopted an initiating resolution pertaining to the R8 Rural Residential and A1 General Agricultural Districts. This resolution contains three specific board directives. The first directive is to amend the zoning and subdivision ordinances to revise the R8 and A1 districts to be consistent with the stated rural lands designation description and development standards contained in the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Plan. These standards include the statement that subdivisions of lots should occur at a density of no greater than one residence per 20 acres. The second directive is to include language that grandfathers all parcels in existence as of January 1, 2022, that are 25 or fewer acres in size. The third directive is to include language that eliminates the central well requirement for subdivisions that are consistent with the stated rural lands designation description and development standards. In response to these directives, staff has prepared draft ordinance language to do the following: to increase the minimum lot size in the A1 and R8 zoning districts from 3 acres to 20 acres, with all parcels in existence as of January 1, 2022, that are 25 or fewer acres in size, being grandfathered with the existing 3-acre minimum lot size; to increase the overall density for the A1 cluster configuration option from 1 unit per 2 acres to 1 unit per 20 acres; and to eliminate the central well requirement for new major subdivisions, meaning these subdivisions are required to have individual wells on each lot. The prepared draft language was reviewed by the Policy Committee at its August 11th and August 22nd meetings. The Policy Committee recommended this draft ordinance language proceed to the Planning Commission by a vote of four to zero. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of the attached draft ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Wyson? Any questions for Mr. Wyson?
Do you?
Ms. Knoll?
Just have a question of staff. Would you please confirm that the language in the Comprehensive Plan that was passed last October is in the resolution, and nothing has been changed? None of the wording has been changed?
Yes, correct.
And does the language in the Board of Supervisors initiating resolution match, which was approved during the joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors earlier this year?
That is the same language, yes, ma'am.
And can you confirm that all meetings related to this matter were held in a public forum?
Yes, ma'am, they were.
Mr. Crop?
Good evening, Mr. Wyson. Just a clarification to make sure that I understand the issue of rural clusters. And in the memo, it referred, we're changing the by right development for single units to one dwelling unit per 20 acres, and then it discusses residential clusters, and it said that they must have an overall density no greater than 1 unit per 20 acres. And first, I was thinking, it seems repetitive, but I want to make sure that I understand that what this residential cluster option allows is it gives, it gives flexibility into lots with the lot sizes, as opposed to locking in one dwelling unit per 20 acres for a 20-acre parcel. This would allow a developer hypothetically, if that person had a 60-acre parcel and wanted to do a cluster of three, you could do 10 acres, 10 acres, and 40 acres. And 40 acres could be farmed and residential and so on and so forth. So, the idea of, in the memo, is that it gives the flexibility to have a smaller lot size than 20 acres, as long as the overall density for the total developable area is 1 to 20. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, in essence, this is, this is a cap, right? So, doesn't matter, if we cluster, it doesn't matter the lot size, but it is, it's limited, it's limited to the 1 to 20 regardless of what the acreage is.
Correct. The units are capped. The actual lots within that rural, the cluster subdivision could be smaller than 20 acres and be designed in a way that accomplishes the purpose of that subdivision.
You have to be a minimum of 1 acre, though, don't you?
Correct. That's the bare minimum within the cluster ordinance. As currently drafted, there is a separate, that's a separate ordinance item that's being considered by the Policy Committee to look at the different standards that could be revised in the future. But what's before you tonight has that language.
So, I'm sorry. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Rogers?
Because I'm not on the Policy Committee, can you give a little history to what went into setting the grandfather clause at 25 acres as opposed to 100 or 200 or 300 acres?
Yes, that was the specific number that was included by the Board of Supervisors within the initiating resolution. So, that decision was made within that resolution and directly informed what was presented to the Policy Committee and what is recommended tonight.
Dr. Rose?
It's a follow-up question on the grandfather clause. You stated that it's in place as of January 1, 2022. Does that impact any properties post that date? Like, are there properties that are going to be less than one parcel per 20 acres after that date that are going to have to be addressed? Why, I guess my question is, why is it that date and not the date this passes?
That date was included in the resolution. I believe the purpose of that was to pick a time period by which there was a clear delineation between what was grandfathered and what wasn't. So, it is possible that lots could be created since that date and that those lots would simply have to follow whatever's adopted in the ordinance. I don't have any numbers tonight on how many that might be, but essentially, the ordinance would apply, and we would look at the acreage and then the date of the property being created and apply the law evenly.
Mr. Crop?
Just one clarification, too, on grandfathering. If a property owner of a parcel that's currently grandfathered sells that to another individual, as long as it was in existence on January 1, 2022, that the new owner retains the benefit of the grandfathering feature, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Wyson? I just have a couple, if I could. Right now, we have a couple of other initiating resolutions, if I understand correctly. So, one being setbacks off of scenic roads, which in essence would affect a lot of these parcels as well. So, I'm just thinking like Forge Road and those types of places. What other initiating resolutions do we have out there?
Well, there's the scenic road that you just discussed, which has been considered by the Policy Committee. There is another initiating resolution for the cluster, which we were referring to earlier, which is looking at the standards, which are separate from the density. And then I believe there are some other initiating resolutions that the Board has granted us. I don't have a progress update. Paul, you might have that.
But the other ones are unrelated to A1. Look at the one general business use list, there is another one to look at neighborhood recreation facilities, but.
So, I'm sorry, do we have one that talks about developable acreage on the?
Oh, and we have one that talks about developable acreage, and right now, the ordinance for larger developments does allow for some consideration to be given for the amount of undevelopable land on a piece of property, and undevelopable is more specifically defined as resource protection area, flood plain, and areas of steep slopes, and how those calculations and how those undevelopable portions of a property contribute to calculating a maximum density.
Right.
Those, those could overlap some as well. They don't speak directly to the minimum lot size, but they could, they could factor in more so into a total density of a proposed new development.
So, sorry. Mr. Holt, and I covered some of this, but I was driving, so I wasn't very good at making notes while I was driving today. And then, at what point do we, as a county, require a homeowners association for a subdivision? So, how many lots would that, would drive that?
It would be a major subdivision, so, you know, anything where a new public road was being created, or, you know, certainly areas where, where neighborhood-wide requirements, such as maybe maintaining open space, would otherwise be a requirement of the subdivision ordinance, but those are specific to major subdivisions and not minor subdivisions. Minor subdivision is five or fewer lots that front on an existing road.
Any other questions for Mr. Wyson? At this point, you're off the hook, but I'm sure you'll be back.
I'll be here.
Thank you. So, thank you. Great, I'm going to open the public hearing on this, just before we get started. So, I have a number of speaker cards. Right now, I have 13, so if I have anybody that wants to speak that didn't sign up with this, please allow me to get through this list, and then we'll ask for any other comments. Please note that if you're an individual, you can speak for up to five minutes, and if you're representing a group, you can speak up to 15. So, with that, I will open the public hearing, and the first speaker card I have this evening is Eric Joss.
Good evening. My name is Eric Joss, and I live at 3006 Forge Road. I'm the Vice President of Friends of Forge Road in Toano. We go by Fort. Friends of Forge Road in Toano is a nonprofit organization founded in 2004 by concerned citizens in Upper James City County. We work with other neighborhood associations and various other groups to promote the preservation of rural areas, enhance awareness of our region's historic significance, and support agritourism. Some of our members have served on the James City County Planning Commission, the Chesapeake Bay Board, the Wetlands Board, the James City County Historical Commission, and the Purchase of Development Rights Committee. In the first instance, Fort applauds and is most appreciative of the extensive and diligent work which the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, the Policy Committee, JCC staff, and other involved persons have devoted, and have devoted and are devoting to analyzing and formulating these critical amendments to our zoning ordinance. Fort strongly supports increasing the minimum lot size from 3 to 20 acres, and accordingly is in favor of the proposed zoning ordinance changes to JCC Code, Chapter 24. As noted in the amendment proposals, these amendments will bring the zoning ordinance into conformance with the approved 2045 Comprehensive Plan by matching the density within the A1 district and the R8 district to the recommended density in the rural lands designation description and the development standards in the Comprehensive Plan. That's at page 36 of the Land Use Section. Further, these amendments will help preserve our ever-shrinking finite rural areas. In addition, these zoning changes will complement the county's strong commitment to its natural and cultural assets, will help promote agritourism, and will invigorate support for our very important Purchase of Development Rights program. Again, we thank you for your diligence and anticipated support of these amendments.
Thank you. The next speaker card I have, Michael Apperson.
Hey, everyone, TV guys. All right. Okay, my name is Mike Apperson. I live at 4950 Fenton Mill Road, and I'm not here so much to, I guess I'm in opposition of the area size that we're cutting off at. A little bit about my history, my family's been here since probably 1850. So, we have roots here, and I'm worried that the 25-acre cutoff affects my family really well. I mean, it hurts us because I'm getting nervous, but, but my grandfather and grandmother at one time had 50 acres, and I have my dad and two uncles, and the family farm was subdivided between their kids. So, now my father and my uncle, I bought a piece of land behind them, split it, we bought it in 96, split it in half. So, my father owns 56 acres. So my father owns 56 acres now. So it's an illegal existence, but it's 56 acres. But there's me, my brother, and two sisters. That my family's wishes is to subdivide it for our kids or for their kids, myself and my two, three siblings. So I guess I'm worried that we, we're bigger than 25, but less than, say, 80. So there's a gray area there that impacts us. And what my family wants to do with their property, I'm an advocate for, and I just don't understand how we go from three acres to 20 because it's six, seven-fold. I mean, if we can subdivide, and I've been in this area, I do work for an engineering firm, and I've seen a lot of changes from when I was a little kid. But how can we say three acres is not big enough? And I understand the agricultural loss, believe me, there's been changes. I went to school in the county, grew up in the county, stayed in the county. So I just don't understand how we go from three acres to 20. And I understand there's probably been some policy meetings and I'm probably naive to have not been here, but I'm just worried that it affects my family personally and it probably affects a lot of other families and a lot of individuals who have been stewards in the county developing three acres or five-acre lots that in their mind think they're doing something well. Because if we can allow a 100-lot or a 1,000-lot subdivision come in, why can't we allow three acres? And I know there's wells, there's drain fields, there's problems there, but it just seems unfair for the people that own land to all of a sudden not be able to enjoy it like the people before us. And I understand maybe a bigger increase is needed, but to go from three to 20 just doesn't seem fair. I mean, why wasn't, so my gripe is not with the Planning Commission, maybe it's with the Board of Supervisors, because why did we say 25 acres is the cutoff? I mean, I guess we got to pick a number. And I figured it would come to discussion, and I knew this was going to come to fruition, I guess. But I'm here to say, I guess I oppose it. And I think we should talk about it now that it's been presented legally, not really legally, but formally, that we, I guess, let the community make sure they understand what's happening because I think it's hurting a lot of individuals. You know, stakeholders. And I don't know if anybody on the policy has, say, 20 acres or more. Maybe there's a guy on the Policy Committee that has 500 acres, I don't know. But the people that are making these policies, I don't know if they, other than being a county citizen, which is valuable to the county, I don't know if they have, you know, ownership to tell, and I'm a believer of property rights, I think people should be able to do uses on their property that will conform to the zoning ordinance. I'm in favor of zoning ordinances, I mean, they've heard of all these, but I just think from three to 20, no good. And I'm really nervous, guys, so I apologize. So I guess we'll listen to the other 12 people on the list, or 11 now, and this will go to the Board of Supervisors ultimately, and we'll see what happens. I just, I guess my time's almost up, so I'm going to let everybody else speak now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Apperson. Bruce Abbott.
Chairman and commissioners, my name is Bruce Abbott. I live at 4478 Centerville Road, Williamsburg. I operate Greenswamp Farm, if you drive by there, I am in the farming business. I have had the privilege of working for the Board through the PDR program, and I am currently on the AFD Board. And I've supported both of these committees because they were volunteer committees. An owner has the opportunity to seek out that, whether they wanted to put it in the AFD or they applied to you as a county to purchase their development rights. I have a conservation easement on our property, so I don't have a whole lot of stake in this. We do own some other properties, but I have a lot of concern. One of the concerns is I have grandkids, I have great-grandkids, where are they going to live? The school boards are, and the Board of Supervisors are already talking about another elementary school. Where are all those kids going to live? The marketing of this 20 acres, who's going to buy 20 acres here in Williamsburg? My kids can't, I can't even buy three acres in Williamsburg, but yet y'all want to put on to the upper county, mid-county, hey, you're going to go to 20 acres? Who's done any marketing on this 20-acre parcels and limiting the people? There are people that have sat on this land and it's part of their retirement. What if we came to you and said, okay, we're going to slash y'all's retirement if you had some, or most of you have, I'm sure, and cut all of your retirement plans out? The kids are the main part. The fact that, I mean, Michael has already addressed some of this, most of you are making decisions and probably don't own half-acre land. A lot of these other people that are sitting out here own lots of acres for many years. My wife's family's been here for hundreds of years. So, you know, those people are the ones you're affecting. And I don't know what the drive was to get to this 20 acres. I'll tell you what, I know that when I moved here in 1988, when they went to the three acres, I actually heard one of the Board of Supervisors said, let's tell them we're going to do 20 acres, and when we drop it to three acres, they'll prove it. And that's exactly what happened. And it's very sad that you try to control, I think, a lot of this. One of the things that really bothers me, there's no planning to teach kids agricultural of any kind in our community. When I pass on, and I'm 71 years old, several of these others passing on, we don't know who's going to farm, who do you think's going to farm? The kids don't want to do it because it's too hard, but yet you want to call it agriculture? My whole thing that I see is scenic and control. You want to have a lot of scenery, you want a lot of control of the land that's left out there. So I'm definitely opposed to this, not only for a lot of these people, that it's just, to me, outrageous that we move in this direction to take the rights away from the landowners that have been here for many, many years. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Abbott. Next speaker card I have is Peyton Harkam.
Peyton Harkam, living 3183 Chickahominy Road. I'm not sure how many of y'all own 25 acres, but I don't think y'all going to be impacted by any of it. So I'm not sure why y'all are deciding. In fact, I don't even know if y'all know what an acre looks like. Not now that I got that off my checks. 25 acres is, it's too much. If I have, if I get incapacitated and I need to sell a little bit, then my son will have to sell our most productive land. We only have 62 acres. 30 of it, good, tillable land. That means y'all are going to force him out of the possibility of raising a crop or anything for y'all. Other than the fact, there's always the money factor, or what does it do? Do we sell our land for 25 acres? Who wants, who can afford 25 acres? I'm not sure I want them, quite frankly. How about the people who moved here like y'all and bought your small lots? Y'all would have to purchase 25 acres. I don't think that's fair. As far as the PDR goes, it's been made a mockery. I don't even want to hear about the PDR. Maybe y'all weren't here when we voted on the PDR, but it was a voted-on referendum that the taxpayers allowed $20 million to start this program. When it was ended, nobody on the board, the advisory board, knew what was happening. They didn't even know if they were going to meet or nothing. The powers that be took upon them to subsidize with the taxpayers' money these programs, these lot sales up and down Forge Road. And that's all it is, is subsidizing. You know, how many of y'all were here when we voted on that? Nobody? Well, it was a voted-on referendum, and if the county wanted to take it out of PDR, then they ought to pay the taxpayers back. I didn't use all my time.
Thank you, Mr. Harkam. Next speaker card is Will Harkam. Next speaker card, Donald Hazelwood.
Name's Don Hazelwood. I live at 9808 Fire Tower Road, the upper end of the county. I live on a small farm that my father purchased in 1924. My son's here to inherit my property when I leave. I'm 83 years old. I don't plan on selling the property, but I'm really concerned what this is going to do to the value of this property for my son if he decides to sell. You talk about grandfathering these 25 acres, held 1924, ought to be grandfathered. On this property, it's a small farm, it's 130 acres, only a small amount of it is farmland, about 100 acres is woodlands. Stonehouse surrounds me on three sides. The property is very strange, there's creeks down each side, a lot of roll. Only thing it's good for would be for homes. Being that close to Stonehouse, it, to me, was very valuable someday. When Stonehouse wanted to expand, that would be ideal. With this proposal, that's out the window. You know, I mean, I just, I just think you're ruining the value of my property probably tenfold. The property's not good for anything other than that. I can grow trees on it, but there's no big profit on that. Been in the family this long, I think some consideration ought to be done for the people who sell it. I know you got to talk about these three-acre lots. You got thousands of people voting against me, wanting to do away from my rights. I only have one vote. You got thousands of cluster home people saying, hey, let's stop all this. Let's devalue all this property so they can't develop it. I just, I just think this whole thing is very unfair. A lot of things I wanted to say, one of the main things I want to tell you is I'm extremely hard of hearing. I may have said some things here that maybe I should have known before, but I couldn't understand a word y'all were saying. Even these people here, I was having trouble understanding what they were saying. But I know how it's affecting me, and I want you to know that, that I'm very concerned where this is going. Not so much for me, but for my Arabs. Any questions to me? You have to be loud.
Mr. Hazelwood, this is your opportunity to address the Planning Commission, so we'll have discussion later, so you'll be able to hear what everybody else has to say. This is your opportunity to address the Planning Commission, and we'll have discussion later, so you'll get to, yeah, so no questions at this point. Thank you.
I'd like for you to consider whether I should be grandfathered, since this property has been in the family since 1924. We've paid taxes all those years, we've supported the county, and we've been good citizens. I think some consideration ought to be for the people that's been here, not the ones that come here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazelwood. Our next speaker this evening is Sheila Chandler.
Hello, my name is Sheila Chandler. My husband, Kenny Chandler, and I live at 7900 Newman Road. We own the Chandler Farm, over 200 acres on Newman Road. And it's been in Kenny's family, five generations. We just found out our grandson is going to have a baby, so it'll be six generations at this farm. And Kenny's grandfather stowed away from Denmark at the age of 19 to come to America because of the freedoms that we have here. And I appreciate all of you sitting up here. I worked for the government for 40-some years, federal over 30, state over 10. And I appreciate all the work that you do. But as some of these other gentlemen have said, the locals here, the people that are invested here, the people that have lived here all of their life, I came in 1970, I'm a transplant, but my husband was born and raised here, one of the very few Virginians you can find. We want that freedom for our land, to give it or sell it how we want to. We don't want to think that some person, say, getting out of college, some young professional is going to have money to buy property, 20 acres to build a house on. We've all heard about the student loan business and how that affects people. People coming, young professionals, we need those people in our community. We talk about scenic roads. Who doesn't like to drive by and look at the beautiful landscape of James City County? But when you talk about scenic roads, you're talking about possibly, probably, taking people's property to make that beautiful road for somebody else to drive down and look at. Please consider that. Please consider it's not just a road. We have a hay farm. People look at our hay fields and they say, oh, it's grass, it doesn't matter that we want to shoot our rockets off in your grass field, or it doesn't matter that we want to do donuts in your grass field. That's our livelihood. We have a beautiful family going on six generations now, and we like the privilege and the freedom that we have in America to do what we want to with our property. We don't want to sell our property, but we don't want to stymie what may come later for us or our children, where it would put us in a place where we would not be able to take care of ourselves because of some regulation that stops us from doing what we want to with it. Who doesn't like the beautiful land? We all do. Three acres is plenty for someone to build a house on. You're not going to be on top of someone. 20 acres to me is just unreasonable, and I ask that this be reconsidered. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chandler. Ronald Boomer.
Good evening. I too am one of these people who, I was born and raised here all my life.
Mr. Boomer, would you mind giving us your address, please?
My home address is 115 Wilderness Lane.
Great, thank you.
It's where I live. I am partial owner of a family estate, farmland, multiple parcels up in the Toano area, Racefield Drive, Stewart's Road. That was my grandfather's, we're probably going back 100-and-some years, that I had planned for possibly my kids, my sister's kids, to be able to use that land, build on that land, stay together, be together. And I just, I'm confused and baffled by this 25, 20-acre parcel versus three. I keep seeing the word special use permit mentioned multiple times. I don't know exactly what that means as far as making these more accessible sizes as such as three acres. I don't know. I see special use permit... I see "special use permit," "special use permit." You know, is that just something that you have to purchase in order to minimize? I heard one mention about, y'all were talking about one acre at minimum. And what is that for? Is that for a developer to come in to make these cluster homes? That they can get this special use permit, but the, you know, us landowners that have this, that, you know, inherited this land? Who knows? Maybe I don't want to do anything with it. Maybe I want to leave it the way it is. But I want the option to be able to do what I would like to do with the, the land that my grandfather farmed all his life. It's now bestowed upon me to be the steward of the land. But, but again, like everybody has mentioned, 20, 20 acres per person? Really? Do you know what size? Actually, how large that would be if I took my land and we could only put one person per 20 acres? It's, it's just, it's really unreasonable and unfair to people like myself, my kids, maybe their kids. So I just want to go on record, because I'm definitely opposed to this idea. I mean, we all want to see beaut... I love it. I love it out there. Recently, there's coming a 26-acre solar panel field directly across from our farm that we have now. Was I in favor? Not really? Did I oppose it? No. I don't want somebody to tell me what I can do with my property. I didn't want to tell the neighbors what they can do with their property. We need to go green. We need to find a way to stop this, this global warming. But in turn, to tell us you have to have a 20-acre parcel per person is just absurd. And I do not agree with it, and I hope you guys will see where I'm coming from and, and vote this down. Or, or explain what the special use permit is. How much is that gonna cost me? If I want to put my two boys or my nieces want to move there? I want to build a house up there. You know? What, what's it gonna take to have to do that? Is it just, is it a money thing? That, okay, now you need to apply each of you for a special use permit? We'll let you have your three acres at whatever X amount? I don't know. I'd like to have answers to this. Maybe I should have done a little more research about this, because it's baffling me. But again, you know, that, that size, to save each person, one person in the family, it's just, to me, it's just ludicrous. I mean, it's, it's unacceptable. There we are. Hopefully, I'll, I'll do some more research to find out some of these answers that I have questions about. You know, this special use permit, I see mentioned multiple times in the little short summary that I received through email. And hopefully, we can reach a mutual understanding for everyone and, and keep James City County a beautiful place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boomer. Randy Taylor.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Randy Taylor. I've resided 204 Crescent Drive. Lifelong resident of James City County. My family owns property in the county. I own several pieces of sizable acreage in the county with my brother and, and some other people. Just want to say that I am opposed to this change in zoning. I urge the planning commission to reject this. This zoning change unjustly and unfairly targets property owners with parcels over 25 acres in the A1 districts. Way I understand it, if this passes, if you own 15 acres in James City County currently, 15-acre parcel, you can subdivide that into five pieces, three-acre lots potentially. But if you own 39.9 acres, you get one lot. How is that fair and just? Please tell me, because it is not. As I said, you know, at this time, I'm a partner in several pieces of land, and I have no desire to develop any of it. I think you've heard from all these people that are over here tonight that have spoken so far, the same thing. None of us have any desire to develop the property right now. But we don't know what's gonna come one day for our children or our grandchildren. They may need to develop the property one day and split some parcels off. As somebody else spoke earlier, they may get sick and need to split a parcel of land off to be able to live. And to, instead of taking a small piece of land and being able to split it off and sell it and make some income so you don't have to lose the whole big, large piece of property, you're gonna make people sell off large pieces of property and split their farms up or split, split whatever, you know, whether it's a farm or whether it's a, you know, just a piece of property. You're gonna make them split up into large pieces of property. I understand you're trying to curb development in the Upper County. And again, I don't want to see the Upper County developed. You know, like I've lived here all my life. You know? But you can't completely stop development. And as was spoken tonight already, a jump from three acres to 20 acres? How do we make it big of a jump? Three acres is plenty land to build a house on. And, you know, for anybody else's kids that are being raised in this county, where are they gonna live at? If they want to go out and buy a piece of property, I realize that even a three-acre parcel in the Upper County is not what you would call affordable. But 20 a... Changing it to 20 acres certainly makes it unaffordable for almost anybody in this county. All it does is make it for people, whether it's from outside or wherever, to come in and buy, and, you know, very few people are gonna be able to afford to buy a 20-acre parcel of land and build a house on. So, I mean, it, all it does is, it is, you know, like I said, I feel it's unfair and unjust, and it's hamstring current landowners from being able to even keep the property and sell off a small piece if they need it. You know? And I am definitely against it, and I hope you guys will reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Louis Condeley? Condeley?
Hello. Thank you for having me today. It's a pleasure. Board of Supervis... I mean, a planning commission. A lot of people in this room may have received a letter from me at some point.
I'm sorry, Mr. Condeley. Do you mind just introducing yourself and where you live?
Yes. I do not live in Williamsburg.
That's okay.
My name is Louis Condeley. I am a real estate developer and consultant. I've worked with America's largest home builder for a while, and I have contacted majority of the people who have been here tonight talking about their land in opposition. I am as well in opposition of this change. The SUP that developers would pursue to try to develop a subdivision community would be extremely challenging. So they would just stay out of James City County. Right now, it's extremely challenging for any builder to build in James City County as it is very critical, and you guys take great due diligence into approving all subdivision plans. Don Hazelwood, his farm is in Stonehouse, a community that is right next to an enterprise zone district that has an opportunity for his land to go 10x. I represent a couple of the landowners that have acreage larger than 25 par... 25, that have more than 25 acres. And this would take millions of dollars away from citizens and residents in James City County. It would be a tragedy to see. They've been waiting their entire lives. They have kids. They have families that have equity baked into doing whatever they would like to with their land. And that's their right. And for us to approve something that just takes that away with the slip of a pen, I think is horrible. I can't imagine a developer shooting for anything less than 20 acres. As a consultant, I would not even send a letter to anybody who has less than 25 acres. So it just would deter all development. We're in an epidemic for not enough senior housing. A lot of the builders that pursue land in Williamsburg, they want to build more 55 and up communities. We're looking to be able to provide resources and living for people who want to downsize out of Colonial Heritage. And there's already not enough inventory on the market. So for us to make it even more challenging, for us to put inventory on the market for the median-age residents at this day and age, which is 46 to 50, would be a tragedy. There's plenty of scenic areas in Williamsburg as it is, and there's tons of A1 and R8 land that is off the beaten path in cul-de-sacs and areas that is pristine for this type of development. I think the only spring harbor senior living with actual assistance is available in Williamsburg, and we need more of that. We don't have enough. So I think that there's gonna be quite a few people on board with this, but I just hope that we can have a further discussion and try to come to an understanding of what this number of 25 acres and how we calculated it and what we can do to move that and still preserve or get whatever we're trying to get across with this amendment. Because right now, this is just cutting everybody's livelihood, their retirement, and as we're in a great retirement and a great recession at the same time, it's a really bad time for us to try to take away the equity that people have baked into their land. So I'm gonna give it a minute left. That's my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Condeley. Gary Massey.
Yes, sir. This is an outline of what I'm gonna say. My name is Gary Massey, and I live at 8644 Mary Oaks Lane, Tohono. You ask, why is Gary here tonight? Well, I'm here because Paul Hope sent me 10 letters telling me what we were gonna do tonight and inviting me to come down here and talk to you about it. And I got the first one, and I appreciate it. I got the second one. I said, well, maybe Paul just made a mistake. Well, about the eighth letter, I figured it out, Paul. I own 10 acres, 10 parcels that are zone A1 in the county. And so I got 10 letters. And I felt if y'all asked me 10 times to come down here, I certainly ought to be willing to come down and talk to you about it. So thank you for the invitation. As I said, our family owns 10 parcels with A1 zoning. The parcels range in size from 2.26 acres to 106 acres. Some of the parcels are being used for residential purposes, and others are being used for permitted special uses of mining, production of wood products, and contractors' office and maintenance facilities. Nine of the parcels are outside the PSA, and one is inside the PSA. I read the backside of your letter that you sent me, and I appreciate that. And then, and you have my respect here, I read the 111 pages in your reading packet for the agenda today. And you also have my sympathy, because I know that wasn't the full packet, but that's the ones I read out of it. And, and I appreciate you volunteering to do this and read all those 240-some pages staff sent you. I currently have a boundary line adjustment case, S22007, affecting four of these parcels that's under staff review. I've read the packet presented to the Cannon Commission, and I haven't had sufficient time to review how the proposed ordinance revision will affect my parcels. I request that you defer a decision tonight, continue the public hearing, and allow more time for me to provide you informed comments of the effect of this ordinance on my parcels. Based on what review I've done, there are two items that I would like to see y'all discuss today and in any future, should you decide to continue this. And I throw these out so that you might consider them, and I'd like to see what the planning commission thinks about these questions. Regarding boundary line adjustments, and, and I'm in the middle of one right now, for residential purposes, where there are no additional parcels being created, can the minimum lot sizes be deleted? When I think about the rural character, if I'm not adding lots, I'm not subdividing, but I'm rearranging lot lines, and I've read all 111 pages, and I couldn't figure it out. And my two questions, if you give me answers, maybe it'll help me figure out if it applies to boundary line adjustments, what you're doing. But i-if I have a 26-acre parcel and a two-acre parcel, could I do a BLA and have a one-acre parcel and a 27-acre parcel? Would that be acceptable under this ordinance? And then, to try to understand the ordinance, I gave you another question. If I have a 15-acre and a two-acre parcel, could I do a 16-acre parcel and a one-acre parcel under this current ordinance as a BLA? I'm not adding more lots. I'm not adding more development, but I am rearranging the lots I have. The second thing I'd like for you to consider, on my 106-acre parcel, realistically, it could have held about 30 three-acre lots, residential lots. This amendment changes that to a maximum of five lots on the 106-acre parcel. I believe it will lower the value of my parcel to lose this many lots. Has the county done a fiscal impact study of this ordinance amendment? And, and I don't think you have, or it would have been in the 111 pages. But it's certainly a major rezoning that you're considering. And I don't think you would consider a major rezoning without a fiscal impact study. I think the people in Kings Mill, the people in Grove, the people in Ford's Colony, the people at Colonial Heritage want to know if there's any fiscal impact to them, positive or negative, by adopting this ordinance. And it would seem to me an informed commission would want that information as you pass along your consent to the board. I realize the fiscal impact study takes time, but we've been six months away from the comp plan update, and it's taken a while to get it this far. And this is probably one of the more far-reaching elements of our comprehensive plan update. And I think it deserves a full study by all of us. So tonight, I request you to defer a decision, continue the public hearing, so I can provide more input after I've had more time to read, and, and talk with staff. I need to ask Mr. Wyson, does it have any impact on my current boundary line adjustment case that he's reviewing? And I believe that would be the best course of action for my commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. David Brown.
My name is David Brown. I live at 1502 Bushneck Road. And I really can't add any to what's been said tonight, but I wanted to voice my strong opposition to this amendment. That's it.
Mr. Brown. That was all the speaker cards I had this evening. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Yes, ma'am.
I've spoken before. My name is Mary Adal, 2724 Forge Road. I can't say any more than what has been said, but I would also like to voice my opposition.
Is there anybody else? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Mr. Pollster?
I'd like to take a crack at one of the issues about the SUP and what this really comes down to. And it also goes to Mr. Massey's question on the 106 acres, that you would get 33, three lots, 30 lots at three acres. Underneath this ordinance, as I understand it, for the 20, for the 106, you'd only get five lots, not the 30 that you currently would have underneath there. So in terms of the fiscal impact, I'll leave that to, to staff on it. But we normally don't do fiscal impact states... But we normally don't do fiscal impact statements for issues of this nature, only when there may be an impact for school, water, da-da-da-da-da-da. And of course, none of those factors come into this piece for. I don't know about the boundary line, and that's really up to the staff. But, but one of the things that I did want to say after trying to answer the question was that this day has been coming for two and a half years. When we started the comprehensive plan, and it actually, when we had our first open house meeting live at the Jamestown High School, which I attended, and it was at three other places, locations, as I recall, we had an opportunity for public input. And one of the studies that were done by the consultant agency, in fact, went out and looked at other counties to see what they, their zoning was for the rural areas. And the one-to-twenty was one of the things that pops up in Albemarle and Loudoun, I believe, were the two counties. And there were a couple with some smaller. But anyhow, that, that was the spectrum of the investigation that was done by the consultant firm. So that when we ended up at this open house meeting two, two and a half years ago, and I guess it was in September, fall time, the consultant put up a set of stations around there that the public could go in and say, okay, what do you think about this? And it talked about, for example, what should rural housing look like if it wasn't a cluster-type thing? And there was a specific board there that said, okay, what do you think for the rural lands in terms of one-to-five, one-to-ten, or one-to-twenty? And I understand that the majority of those people who put dots on there and said one-to-twenty weren't landowners. But that's what they said, and that's how we proceeded and got to where we are today. One of the issues that we wrestled with as a planning commission from the very start, when we started looking at this issue, which was presented to us, and it was something that the board wanted us to investigate as we were going through the comprehensive plan, was that people in the rural lands, and we've heard it over and over today, have invested these lands, and they are their retirement. It's their equity. And we are going to hear a lot of feedback when it finally gets to this stage about what that personal impact was. And it's the first time we've actually had the opportunity to hear that. And to that end, I want to thank everybody who came out tonight to provide that feedback to us. It's important. And you get an opportunity, again, when this gets to the planning commission, not to the planning commission, but the Board of Supervisors here in another two months, to be able to voice your opinions on this. But based on that process we went through, the board then took those and came up with this resolution. And that's why Mr. Noel asked that question about, is there any language changes to those resolutions? And there were at least three board meetings that I know of where this was discussed in some depth. And the final decision on the part of the board unanimously, as I recall, was to proceed with this resolution, which is how we got to where we are. Having said all that, there, there is one other thing that I did want to bring up that gets to this notion of a major versus a minor that came up as a question. A minor sub-development in the rural area is five houses and less than bordering a house, bordering a road. A major sub-development is five and up. And so when you look at a two-hundred acre property, it essentially could have ten lots, which makes it a major development. And so the way this SUP is working for the rural cluster, you could end up having ten lots at one acre or ten lots at five acres, and the remaining acres would be open space. And one of the things that we're going to be talking about as we go down the road here that still had to come that Mr. O'Connor brought up is what does that clustering look like on those lands? What are the conditions for it? What is it going to look at? But at this point, what we're looking at is only the one-to-twenty, both in the R8 and in the A1, in the non-P, in the non-PSA areas. And I hope that addresses some of the questions that were asked out there and that you know that we do value your input and the discussion tonight.
Mr. Polster. Mr. Alderman?
Yes. Just two things. Several people tonight, and we've heard it before, addressed the issue of, of a landholder who wants to accommodate a member of the next generation. And as I understand this, we have made an accommodation for that in section twenty-four dash two-one-four, paragraph two, III. Upon issuance of a special permit, family subdivisions are permitted in section nineteen-seventeen of the county subdivision ordinance, may be approved with a lot size that is less than the minimum size as specified in this ordinance, provided no lot is less than one acre. So somebody who wants to carve off a smaller piece for one of their children, this ordinance permits it.
Just, gentlemen, I'm sorry. Gentlemen, I'm sorry. So this is the opportunity. Your, your opportunity was to, during the public hearing. Sir, this is the opportunity for the commissioners to have their discussion. So you're welcome to stay in here, but it's not for back and forth between the commission and, and the rest of the, the audience.
But I'm right about that, Mr. Holder and Mr. Wyson?
So, yes, so just to confirm, so there is an ability under their ordinance, as it's currently written today with three acre minimums, to do less than the minimum lot size with a special use permit. It is a procedure. There are some fees. There are some other caveats to that. That provision is carrying forward. And, you know, certainly from a staff perspective, we'd be, anybody that's interested, Mr. Apperson, anybody else who might be interested in wanting to learn some more details about what those provisions are, the process, what that means. Let's make sure we get your contact information before you leave tonight. We'll reach out to you and cover those. Because again, there's, there's three or four criteria in there. And we'd be happy to walk through that process with anybody here tonight or anybody that wants to call us next week, so.
Thank you. Also, I'd, I'd like to discuss my take on this. I warn you, this, this will get a little tedious, and I don't expect it to satisfy everybody. But I, I voted to include these changes into the Rural Lands Designation and Development Standards in the last comprehensive plan revision. And I voted to recommend approval of these ordinance amendments in the last policy committee meeting, which I chair. And I intend to vote to recommend approval at this meeting. The Rural Lands Designation Description states, quote, "Residential development is not a recommended use and is discouraged outside the primary service area in the rural lands," close quote. That statement has been in the county's comprehensive plan since inception. Moreover, all of the residential zoning districts, as well as the residential comprehensive plan designations, are within the PSA. The goal of the Community Character Chapter in the comprehensive plan is, quote, "The county will be a good steward of the land by preserving and enhancing the scenic, cultural, rural, farm, forestal, natural, architectural, and historic qualities that are essential to the county's distinctive character, economic vitality, and overall health and quality of life of its residents," close quote. Seventy-five percent of people in the community engagement process supported this goal. The goal of the Land Use Chapter is to, quote, "Achieve a pattern of land use and development that reinforces and improves the quality of life for citizens by encouraging infill redevelopment and adaptive reuse within the PSA, limiting development on rural and natural lands outside the PSA, and achieving the other eight goals of the comprehensive plan," close quote. GSA Housing two-point-one-point-three states, "Guide new residential development to areas served by public utilities that are convenient to public transportation, major thoroughfares, employment centers, schools, recreation facilities, and shopping facilities." Policy guidances, page H, that's housing, page twelve, "Foster the development of complete communities by locating new housing proximate to transit services, shopping, employment areas, recreation areas, schools, and community facilities." Page PE forty-two, "Pursue a more compact development pattern within the primary, within the primary services area and reduce the need to develop on rural and environmentally sensitive, sensitive lands outside the PSA." Page Land Use twenty-six, "Provide a more compact development pattern within the primary service areas and reduce the new development in rural lands outside the PSA, as well as potential reductions in the PSA." Page LU, page, Land Use, page three, "It is intended that most residential, commercial, and industrial development will occur within the PSA." So there is no ambiguity about the county's intention for the rural lands, nor has there been since the first comprehensive plan was adopted in nineteen-seventy-five. These preceding statements did not materialize out of thin air. They are the product of exhaustive periodic comprehensive plan reviews and outreaches to county residents. In, in the last comprehensive plan outreach, there was a survey done by the University of Virginia, a scientific survey with a margin for error of three percent, plus or minus. Some of the findings. Efforts to protect and improve, improve natural environment, including water quality, air quality, and environmentally sensitive areas. Ninety-five percent of our fellow residents said that it was very important or somewhat important, but only eighty percent was satisfied with the county's efforts. Number two, efforts to protect and preserve the county's rural characters. Eighty-five percent said it was important, but only seventy percent were satisfied. Ninety-three-point-six percent felt that the level of residential development in the county was about right or too high. In the Public Engagement Plan, Phase One, ninety-seven percent ranked that it was important for the county to do more to improve our efforts to protect and preserve our natural environment in the county. Thirty-six-point-seven percent chose protecting and preserving natural environment as the most important for the county to improve, making it the highest-ranked choice. Ninety percent ranked that it was important for the county to do more to improve efforts to protect and preserve our rural character in the county. Seventy-one percent supported protecting as much rural and environmentally sensitive land as possible. The PSA was established in the first comprehensive plan adopted by the Board of Supervisors in nineteen-seventy-five. Quote, "The PSA should provide for adequate economic growth and county housing needs at all levels of affordability," close quote. It did, and it does. The population of the county increased from seventeen thousand to nearly eighty thousand from nineteen-seventy until now. Using county data, county planning staff estimates that there is capacity for ten thousand six hundred additional dwelling units within the PSA, which could increase the county's population by almost one-third, assuming two-point-one people per dwelling unit. There have been dozens of new businesses located in the county in the past fifty years, and there remains thirty-four hundred acres of land suitable for additional non-residential development within the PSA. The county's residential, commercial, and industrial development policies have been and are expansive, to say the least. But they drew the line quite literally at the rural lands. But the line didn't hold. The three-acre density restriction and the central well requirement no longer discourage residential development. The Planning Commission Working Group considered the experience of other high-growth Virginia counties and learned that, and I take this from Land Use, page thirteen, quote, "Experience in growing localities like James City County has shown that it is very hard to achieve long-term successful rural protection without supporting agricultural zoning. Rural zoning with a minimum lot sizes of one-to-ten acres is generally not conducive to the protection of rural character over the long term, as it gradually converts the landscape, both visually and functionally, into a large lot residential character as land is subdivided into lots. In general, the most successful zoning for rural protection has been achieved in the twenty-to-fifty acres per dwelling unit range of density." That's how we got the twenty acres. That has proved to be the case in James City County, as, quote, "The total number of units in the county has increased by approximately five-point-four percent from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and nineteen, while the number of units located in land designated for rural lands has increased by seven percent during the same time, at an average of fifty-seven units annually," close quote. This growth directly contradicts all the goals, the previously mentioned goals of the county and the stated wishes of county residents. So the county has discouraged residential development in rural lands for decades. There are sound environmental, economic, fiscal, and quality-of-life reasons for that policy. That policy is supported by strong majorities of county residents, and the present system has not been working, which is why I plan to vote to change it. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. Mr. Krupp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to preface it by saying, you know, every land use case that comes here impacts people positively and negatively. And, and I, I really appreciate the, the folks who came out to speak tonight. And, you know, no, nobody up here is immune to some of the heartfelt comments that were made about the impact on families or on property and, and that sort of thing. And I'll, I'll try not to be repetitive, but basically, you know, our, what's been driving this happened, as Mr. Polster said, about two and a half years ago with the comprehensive plan. And Land Use Chapter was a, was a huge block of time that, that involved public feedback, the opportunity for public feedback and public comments. We had posters on water buses asking people to express their opinion on the comprehensive plan. We had public meetings. We, we had, even though the pandemic was in place, we had provisions for the public to join into discussions remotely. And one of the, one of the, the facts that did come out of all of these discussions and all of the, the analysis of, of other jurisdictions in Virginia is the fact that if your goal is to control residential development in rural lands, the current practices are not effective. That based on other land use jurisdictions, one-to-twenty is the minimum. And actually, the consultant indicated that one-to-fifty is a better use. But there was no appetite for that for anybody. But the ultimate goal of this is, in fact, to try to control residential development in the rural lands. One of the things to, I understand, being a landowner, I own a few acres in the rural lands myself. But, you know, if I had the, the latitude to do whatever I wanted with it, say I wanted to, I had the ability to put, you know, a number of residential units there, that doesn't happen in a vacuum because a residential subdivision that goes into rural lands will generate population needs for schools, which means additional schools. It generates infrastructure needs. It generates needs for better transportation, and so on, and so on, so forth. And those expenses are borne by the citizens of James City County. And so it's not just operating in a vacuum, saying, it's my land. I want to do with it what I want to do. It's, you know, one of our responsibilities up here is to try to make responsible recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. And, and our governing directive is the comprehensive plan, which is the citizens' plan. It was a two-and-a-half-year process to make the recommendations. And, and that's what, what came out of it. You know, one of the, the elements I've spoken about previously was the Rural Economic Development Committee report. And for those, and I'm, I'm looking at folks who would like to, maybe can't farm their, their rural lands, but would like to, to have other income-producing activities on those lands. And, and that Rural Economic Development Committee report had twelve or fourteen strategies for how to, everything from agritourism to viticulture to just a, a ton of different initiatives that could possibly be profitable for rural landowners. And I would hope, and I've said this previously, I would hope that the county starts to really take a more proactive approach to implementing the recommendations in that Rural Economic Development Committee report. It's been a number of years now since that report was written. But not to belabor the point, the, the comprehensive plan was very clear in laying out what the, the, the public expected. The citizen surveys for every comprehensive plan that I've ever been involved in, and I, and there's been four of them, has overwhelmingly said protect and preserve rural lands, the view shed, and, and encourage development within the primary service area. So for those reasons, I'll, I'll vote to support the ordinance. But I, I also wanted to give a little bit of background as to what was driving the one-to-twenty and, and what prompted this initiating resolution. Thank you.
Krupp? Other comments? Rogers?
So, mine is more discussion-oriented as opposed to addressing the things in front of us tonight, because I am your newest and least experienced member up here. That's why I get to sit all the way at the end.
That was my seat.
But at least for my own read of these documents, which is recent, I didn't come away with, and I'm hoping you can explain it to me, a good understanding, for instance, of why the grandfather line cut off at 25 acres to the disadvantage of anyone who happens to own more than that, or even the idea of maybe people who own, let's say, in my world, the cutoff is 100 acres, but maybe that the people with 500 acres would have 100 acres grandfathered. I don't quite see the equity of the line, or I don't understand, I guess, how that particular marker helps advance the county's goals, because a part of me at least has this idea that the fact that some people have held on to the land and they've paid taxes, I'm assuming you're all up to date on your taxes, and they've held the land in good faith, I don't know why it becomes their responsibility to correct this other world that we let get away from us. So, it's like if everyone wakes up and puts their dots, and I go to a lot of these meetings too, and they're very useful, everyone has the colored dots, and they say, "Yes, we need to protect the land more." But if we didn't do the best job protecting it, I struggle with that we try to correct it in one ordinance revision that increases the minimum three acres that everyone seems to have right now by sevenfold. So, can anyone at least help me with the history of the 25-acre grandfather clause? Maybe it comes from the Board of Supervisors. I don't know. I just couldn't find it.
You know, I think it's fair. So, you know, let me start off by saying, I'm not going to be able to sit up here and articulate an answer, but that's because the board covered that, I thought, pretty well when they had a conversation earlier this year, as they deliberated and discussed their desire for the initiating resolution, and then subsequently voted unanimously for it. I'm trying to stall for time as I try to remember that conversation from many, many months ago. It's not coming back to me. But again, I wouldn't necessarily want to, you know, paraphrase some of the board's goals anyway, but, you know, we can certainly go back, pull that video, pull those notes, provide you that information for follow-up. You know, I will say throughout, which is sort of what you heard from some of the other commission members, I think the board, in their previous public meetings and in their consideration and deliberation of the comprehensive plan and that text that was included in that, heard from a lot of the exact same people in this room and even more. We had a couple of very well-attended meetings and, again, got really helpful feedback. The comprehensive plan was not written to automatically exclude or to include a recommendation to exclude less than 20 acres. And so, you know, some of that early-on feedback helped to inform some of that decision and heard from property, many property owners that held a few acres and many property owners that held a lot of acres.
As I recall, when we first saw this at the Planning Commission in one of our public meetings, the staff had prepared, at the request of the board, a methodology in terms of how they got to the 1 to 20. In fact, that methodology looked at 1 to 5, 1 to 3, 1 to 5, and the analysis then looked at all of the parcels within the county that would have fell within the 1 to 20 and which would have been impacted by this outside of the PSA. As I recall, the conversations with the board is they wanted to raise that to the 25 acres because of the number that it was impacting on the 20, as I recall. But it was a methodology that, in fact, looked at the different variations based on the public feedback, and then analysis of which lands were going to be impacted and what were those conditions are going to be. That's, as I recall, Paul.
That gets to the 1 to 20. I think, and I really appreciate, Mr. Alderman, you doing your recap, too, of the 1 to 5 and the 1 to 10 and the 1 to 20. I guess my question, or part of my question, is more focused on the grandfather question as to who would not have to abide by the 1 to 20.
That's something that you're going to have to pull out of the notes.
Yeah, that's the 25 acres that the board took into consideration as part of their initiating resolution, which I think was very much a direct outcome of those earlier public input opportunities.
Any other comments? Dr. Rose?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. I want to thank everyone who's come out to speak tonight. It always has an impact on us and certainly on me when I'm thinking through this. For me, I'm struggling with this decision a little bit, in part because I recognize the need to preserve rural landscapes and the discussion that came out of the comprehensive planning. I'm somewhat skeptical about those surveys personally, and we've discussed this in the past, but the consideration of the impact of going from three acres to 20 acres seems significant. And that's the part that I'm really struggling with, is this fairly large jump, as you said, to correct the problem that others created. And I'm concerned mainly about the impact that it has, not just from the people we've heard this evening, but from my own look at some of these situations. And so, for me, I have to weigh that decision, both for the desire to have these, in some cases, I think, romantic views of the rural landscape, scenic views that I love, that I want to have and within short drive from where I live, versus the impact that it would have on many of the landowners, not only that came out tonight, but I think are represented by the people that are here this evening. And so, I'm weighing all that, and I'm struggling to honestly come up with a decision here, although I'm honestly leaning towards no on this because of that significant impact. I wish there was, for me, I wish there was less of a jump. I wish there was more flexibility in the way this is being approached. I know that's a challenge, and I know these zoning requirements are useful for making decisions, but it just seems so drastic to me and so impactful to take this significantly.
Dr. Rose? Al, do you have anything you want to say?
I just see both sides of this, and I thank everybody for coming tonight. But as a person who had to commute to Northern Virginia for 17 years and just see parcels and parcels just build out with 5,000 houses, 2,000 houses, where they wanted to put Disneyland in, there's like 10,000 houses there now. And I just, it just bothers me because it used to be so beautiful. It used to be so pretty driving up to Dulles Airport. Now I know all the back roads, and all you see on the back roads are development after development after development. We have enough property here within the PSA to take anybody who wants to move here. We have, in the land use chart, we have addressed families. The family part is in there, and I was concerned with that up in Pennsylvania, too, on the Planning Commission. You have, you can take little parcels off your land for family members, so we're not restricting that for families. So, really, what we're restricting it to is new people moving in. I see equestrian centers. I see wineries. Patricia Kluge in South Albemarle did a subdivision of 25 acres, and she went in and put all the grapes in and bought all the grapes from the people, and they loved it, and it's beautiful. So, I just don't want this to turn into Fauquier County, to Northern Virginia, to just thousands and thousands of houses. And I think there is a way around this for the people that own land now, who want to give it to their families, can do that, and that's great. And I think other people will come here, and I think they will start little wineries or whatever agriculture things they can do, grow Christmas trees, whatever they're allowed to do. So, my opinion is I want to keep it the way it is as much as possible. Thank you.
Well, I, too, would like to say thanks for coming out tonight, and I think my colleagues will tell all of you in attendance that I'm the one that constantly reminds them that you all are the ones who always tell us, "This is your retirement. This is your inheritance for your kids. This is your investment to your retirement plan." So, that is constantly in the discussions that we have. I share a lot of Dr. Rose's views, because I'm not sure that all of this is something that should be borne by these landowners, you know? And I'm trying to balance the comprehensive plan against what we adopted last year or earlier this year against this ordinance rewrite. And I think at the end of the day, Mr. Holt's tried to talk me off my ledge for the last two days, but I think I view this ordinance rewrite as incomplete. And the piece where I really struggle is on the cluster portion. You know, we talk in the comp plan about, you know, the cluster should match the same density pieces as a cap, but we also talk about creating incentives and bonuses for cluster developments, but we don't have that mechanism in place right now. We don't have a housing opportunity policy. We don't have any of these pieces in place that allow for density bonuses that ultimately could benefit the landowner and also benefit the county by lessening the developable area on these larger parcels. I am also struggling with the fact that we have these other initiating resolutions that are going to reduce the developable area by removing the RPAs and the steep slopes and the wetlands and all those pieces. And then, when we start talking about the scenic corridors and what these setbacks might look at, we're taking even more of the developable portion of these properties and creating, you know, scenic view sheds, which, while we all enjoy them and we like that. I live in Toino. I walk and bike down Forge Road all the time, and I enjoy that. But, you know, at the end of the day, those scenic view sheds in Forge Road are going to benefit the people driving up and down Forge Road. It doesn't necessarily benefit the entire community. And those folks who see farmland as you're driving out Route 60, you know, which is Anderson's Corner and some of these other places, you know, we know those are going to be developed, and we're not putting these restrictions in place on those lands inside the public service area. So, for me, I don't, I serve on the policy committee. I voted to advance this to the Planning Commission so we could have this public hearing, so we could get your feedback, because I think it's invaluable. But at this point, I don't intend to support this ordinance as it's written, because I feel like it's incomplete, and I feel like we don't understand the impact based on these other initiating resolutions that are out there. And, you know, Mr. Polster alluded to that back in the end of August, and, you know, I didn't quite realize the impact until this weekend, as I dug through all these pieces. So, you know, I appreciate the fact that you're here and we had this discussion tonight, but I don't intend to support this as it's written. I, you know, I'm on the fence about eliminating central wells as the other portion of that as well, so.
Do we have the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to defer this for a while until we get more information, or no?
I mean, that's up to you all as the commission, so, you know.
So much more information that we seem to want and we need, and you want to, the wells and all of that stuff, so why don't we defer it? Can we do that?
Is this a publicized public hearing already for?
We have not yet advertised this for a public hearing for the Board of Supervisors at their October meeting. Of course, you know, should this item move through tonight, that would be the normal course of action, and we would move forward in preparing that for their October meeting. You know, certainly, with any deferral tonight, it would need to be to a date certain. It couldn't just be, "We'll bring it back later once we figure all that out." You have to give a date tonight with which you want all of that other information back, because once we've advertised it for a public hearing tonight, if we don't dispose of it, we need to do that to maintain the continuity and the...
I'm not an advocate of a deferral unless we have specific direction, right? So, I mean, if we have specific things we'd like the staff to address to come back to a date certain, great, but, you know, a deferral for the sake of a deferral just doesn't do anything for anybody, so.
I will mention, that's in our last policy committee. That's why I requested that the staff put three scenarios together that would look at the issues of clustering, the scenic roads, and the implications of the natural heritage and cultural pieces. From the point of view that when the staff came to making a decision on a rural cluster major development, we could articulate what those standards would be associated with the available information that we had. And so, I think in terms of the scenic road, we were rather certain that it would only apply to Forge Road and the Chickahominy, if I'm correct on that. But the setback was an issue with the view sheds and how far that could be. And then, on that issue, the consultant for that issue was coming back to talk to us about it. Having said that, you know, I had all these Missgivings in August that I expressed. I still kind of have a problem with it, but I was trying to separate myself from the issue of 1 to 20 and this versus those other issues that we are going to have to decide. The thing that I think bothers some of us is that the people out here don't know what that impact is going to be. And that's really kind of the issue, is how can we make a decision and how can they comment without knowing what the full impact of those other pieces are yet to come, meaning the scenic roads and the clustering standards for that? And we still have work to do on that. And that was the objection that I brought up originally, and even though I've separated this thing out, in my mind, it's separated out, but in terms of the people that are out here, they haven't got a clue what we're talking about. I mean, they had a hard time just understanding the 1 to 20 and a clustering and what that meant to them. And how do you explain to them, "Well, okay, you may have 200 acres, but as a gentleman said, you know, a lot of it's in an RPA. It's this, it's this, it's this, and so it's excluded out of the thing," could be. So, how would they know? So, that's kind of where I am on this thing. So, if we went in there, is it possible that the three scenarios, case studies we've asked, will they answer our questions, yes or no?
You know, from a staff perspective, especially to the degree it helps your conversation here, and especially as it relates back to the comprehensive plan, and even probably more so back to the initiating resolutions and the work plan that was discussed at the Joint Board and Planning Commission work session earlier this year. You know, I certainly think in terms of putting together an ordinance and putting together the draft changes and recommendations, as they specifically apply to the 20-acre minimums, which is pulled directly out of the adopted comprehensive plan, I think staff as well has sort of done our best to cleanly separate those out, and I think that's what you've got presented in your agenda packet tonight and is a very single decision point. You know, I certainly think some of those other decisions about some of the other initiating resolutions and, you know, how this item may inform those other decisions, inform where you all end up on some different scenarios that you've posed back to staff for us to go research further and bring back. It's a little less clear to me from a staff point of view, from a timeline point of view, when we may get some very concrete direction from you all about how that could translate into some ordinance language. It's a little less clear to me from a, from a staff point of view, from a timeline point of view, when we may get some very concrete direction from you all about how that could translate into some ordinance language. Don't disagree, they don't, they don't interact. However, you know, I will confidently say those amendments will have to be advertised for public hearings as well. So, you know, I certainly wouldn't want to thank any, anyone to sort of leave here tonight thinking that this public input opportunity is specific to, to all future changes in A1 or R8. Those will come, there'll be even more after that in years two and three as we sort of talked about potentially as part of our longer-term work plan. But I, I just don't, at least from a staff perspective, I wouldn't feel comfortable sitting here tonight giving you a comfortable, educated guess about when we might have those drafted into ordinance text, but I am a hundred percent comfortable that whatever, at whatever point where you reach those, they will be advertised for a public hearing and we'll do more public notices and everything that we normally do.
Well, that, that's what I came off the ledge on the twenty-second and why I voted for us to go forward. I have those concerns, I'm glad to see that Tim has the same ones, but I want the folks out here to know that there's still more to come. And the example that I used is that there's also the notion of the stockage rate for horses that's also part of the comp plan, and that's something that we're going to be dealing with at a later point. I just wish that some of these things that are going to impact the folks out here is that they had a, a full boat of what those things are and when we're going to be discussing them so that they can at least participate and, and inform themselves about what we're going to be doing. So I'll, I'll back off the deferral.
I think part of the, the challenge is, you know, I think Mr. Massey brought it up tonight, you know? I don't know that he was paying close attention and he's been part of the development community for, for years, but until, you know, he got ten of the five thousand letters that were sent out, I don't think he paid any mind to it. And I think that's what drove most of the people to attend tonight. I, you know, I, I, I don't know how we ensure that, you know, the folks who are impacted by this, you know, get, get notified and, and have that opportunity because, because certainly we didn't see this side of the equation in participation in the comp plan.
All right. So I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission approve ordinance two-two dash zero-zero-zero-two, amendments for R8 rural residential and A1 general agricultural lot size related to the requirements. And I assume this has to do with the water piece also and the clustering piece.
And so there, with, within this one advertised ordinance amendment, there were three sections, as you mentioned, Mr. Polster, R8 residential, A1 general agricultural, and also proposed amendments to the subdivision ordinance relating to the central.
And the water.
Correct.
The central water, okay. That's my motion.
Motion to approve. Will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kropf?
Aye.
Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Mr. Polster?
Aye.
Mr. Rose?
Oh.
Ms. Knoll?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
No.
And Mr. O'Connor?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries.
So, thank you very much. So just for everybody that's here tonight, so this amendment has passed, or this ordinance has passed and will be going on to the Board of Supervisors, I believe, at their October meeting. So please be on the lookout for the October Board of Supervisors meeting. And there will be future amendments to the ordinance as we've been discussing this evening, so in particular how clustering and scenic setbacks and the like go. So please, you know, please stay in touch with the planning staff and Mr. Apperson and Mr. Bomer. You know, Mr. Weisong can help you with the ordinance too as it pertains to, to family subdivisions. I know he'd be happy to walk you through that so you understand that piece. So again, thank you for coming out tonight and please see the notices for the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Same, Mr. O'Connor?
And I'm sorry, this is kind of unusual, but I, at least what I heard at my end of the table was that the amendment passed. It actually has not passed. We're going to recommend to the Board of Supervisors.
Only a recommendation.
That they consider and pass it. So it, it might be important to contact your supervisor and to.
And then more importantly, there will be a whole nother public hearing at which folks can come speak again. And that'll be a part of that meeting in October.
Right, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight. I appreciate it.
Just going on to the Board of Supervisors.
Next on our agenda is Planning Commission considerations for which we have none.
Nope.
And I will.
Take a two-minute recess.
We'll just hold for a minute while the room empties.
Surprise, Mr. Mas. Surprise, Mr. Mas.
Mission members, we're, we're, we're still live and on the air, so your microphones are still working. We're still live and on the air. We're still live and on the air, so the microphones are active and they're very sensitive.
All right. At this point, we are ready for the Planning Director's report. So, Mr. Holt, I'll kick it back to you.
Absolutely. Some exciting news to share tonight, lots of, hopefully in those extra pictures in the Planning Director's report. Won't share them all on the screen tonight, but it really represents a lot of substantive progress on the construction of the Skiff's Creek Connector down in the Grove Park, represents a fifty million dollar investment in a new roadway to connect U.S. Route sixty with U.S. Route one forty-three. Big picture, it's on schedule to be completed this calendar year. And as you can see from the pictures, they are moving along fast. And so more information to come and hopefully before the holidays, you'll have a new place with which to drive your car in James City County, which will, which will be really good and provide much, some much-needed congestion relief to, to the Grove area. Thomas, can you all take it out in the lobby, please? We're wrapping up. Thank you. Beyond that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything additional to add. Appreciate everybody's time getting through, yes, a very large agenda packet tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Any, any other questions, Mr. Holt?
I, I just have kind of a, one minor discussion item. It has to do with the blow flats piece is, that's really the first time we've seen a battery storage piece. I don't know whether or not this is going to be more prevalent as we go down the road in the future, not so much for maybe a commercial, from a power point of view, but from a commercial point of view in houses and the battery pieces of whether they're used in the disposal of those things. And in my conversations that I had with Adam, I sent him something that talked about the expenses associated with the decommissioning piece. And he replied that apparently he was in a seminar with a bunch of other lawyers in the States and they were absolutely flabbergasted at the cost of these decommissioning pieces, especially when you're looking at a thirty-year period and the inflation that's associated with it. And so just like we've kind of taken this iterative process for the solar farm and the iteration of the conditions that may lead to an ordinance at some point, I, I just think it's another one of these things that needs to be on our radar scope, especially for the hazmat piece that you brought up, Tim, and how that would apply to residential. Because as I understand it, if the, the one, R1 property at the end of that one road was going to use batteries inside as well as from the solar pieces for it. But anyhow, I think that's just one of the other conditional type things that we're going to see more and more of as we go down the road. And that was it for me.
I, I think it's interesting because they, I don't know if you, if I shared it with you, but several years ago I shared with, with a bunch of folks virtual power plants where in the, the West, they're putting solar panels on buildings and in the apartments, they're having battery packs. So, you know, so the batteries power the, you know, the utilities and the lights inside the unit when there's high demand and they charge them up during the day. So, I mean, it's pretty incredible technology, but, but I do get concerned about, you know, what do the rescue folks get into if there's a fire or the like and, you know, what the disposal becomes, so.
Are they having to get building permits to put in solar panels because we have a lot of them going in and colonial heritage and then they buy the batteries and they're storing them god knows where?
Yes, they do require electrical permits and, and inspections from our electrical inspectors, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, because that's scary because, I mean, we do things with generators, but then we think about this as power.
Especially important where you do the interconnect with Dominion System because, you know, you don't want one backfeeding the other and causing lots of problems that, yes, that then lead to huge problems electricity-wise. So, it's, yeah, it's interesting. A lot of these new applications that we're seeing represent these new technologies and it'll be interesting to see what, what else comes along for sure.
One's coming.
The short ones though, not tall ones, very short.
Any other questions for Mr. Holt? Mr. Haldeman?
Not a question, but I mentioned to Mr. Holt by email that there was a brief indirect reference in one of the newspapers to the possibility of a fairly large housing development going in on the Williamsburg side of Strawberry Plains Road. And I, I tried to find it on the Williamsburg website, the Planning Commission agenda for which this is supposed to go. I couldn't find it, which made me appreciate our website all the more, but if it happens, of course, there'll be a major impact on James City County, both that road on both, both, both ends, Monachello, Ironbound Road on the one end and Tyler Highway on the other end and of course, things that go with. We just hope that have some in, if it's, first of all, if it's true, I'm not sure it's true, that's, it wasn't an official announcement, but I would hope that James City County could have some put into us that is right on our board.
We do at the staff level, I'll have to go back, it, it did not ring any bells, but, you know, a lot of times things take a, as you all know, a lot of times things take a while between concept ideas and bubbling up to a full public hearing. A lot of that interaction happens very frequently between the three localities because, of course, there's a basis in, in state code that says with, when you're that close on a boundary, you have to let the other locality know. And so, you know, usually where afforded some opportunities at the staff level, nothing else more than an awareness factor. Certainly for the big ones, you know, we, we try to provide some substantive input and those types of things, but that's, that's really where that sort of happens. It would be at the staff level. That one just in particular doesn't ring any bells, but I'll go back and.
May not, may not be true, but.
Scan through, you know, and it, it'd be a concept sketch that somebody submitted because, you know, they, they have the same public information systems, kind of like we do, where anybody can kind of go in and see just about whatever's been submitted. Works really well here in the county for sure. But again, sometimes somebody will pick up on a sketch versus something that might be ready for, for primetime, as they say. I'll see what I can find out for you.
Let me ask just a, a question. In, in the back of my mind, I, I seem to remember the comprehensive plan containing a table that shows of, of all the parcels in James City County, how many are above a certain acre, fall within certain acre purviews? Am I imagining that or do we have something like that that we've done the demographics on? Because that question came up a lot, is how many of our total, say, A1 parcels are zero to twenty-five acres or three to twenty-five acres? And how many are above twenty-five acres?
I'll have to go back and see if we've got it broken out by acreage. I know, I know we absolutely have, I believe it's, it's probably a pie chart in there about how much of county land is either zoned or designated for rural or ag versus residential and commercial. It's some high-level categories and then we sort of have another category for, you know, PL and sort of all those other things. I know we have that breakdown between residential, non-residential, and we routinely update that percentage on the rural lands and, and things outside the PSA. I'll have to see if we breaking that out by acreage. That one I don't recall.
In your methodology, when you did the one to three, one to five, one to ten and one to twenty, you did acreage and lots.
Which was more of a working paper.
It was part of the comp plans.
Yeah, I don't know that we translated that into the, the final published adopted document.
Maybe I'm thinking of one of our.
Methodology, yeah.
And, you know, I think we, and I, I want to be clear too, my recollection from that exercise was it was very much a working paper. I, I do not want to sit here and say that, you know, we have with scientific certainty that that's an absolute correct because there are just so many assumptions that go into those types of things. You, you just don't ever really know for sure.
One to twenty number changed from when they did the actual outlet. So, I mean, there was some pluses and minuses in there.
Very much. Definitely more of a sense of magnitude than, than a calculation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Holt off the hook now?
I'll, I'll make a motion adjourned.
Well, we have Planning Commission discussion and request, which we kind of lapsed over, but I do just want to say thank you to everybody sitting up here because I know that was a lot of material to slog through and I appreciate, one, all the questions that went to staff and the thoughtful comments because I think at the end of the day, we did a good job of explaining to the folks who were here tonight, you know, how we got to where we are. So I, I, I am very appreciative of it because I don't have the way with words as, as some of you do, so I appreciate it. And thank you to your team for being so responsive with, with questions and, and searching things out. So again, that's appreciated. We haven't had an agenda like this in a while, so I think it's a little rusty on that one, so.
Well, we'll have more, more, not as full, but more robust agendas probably for the next couple of months. We've had a lot of items in the queue. So again, as they're ready to bubble up and become finalized for public hearing, we'll have those ready for you.
So entertain a motion to adjourn to October. So all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.